I'm going to call us to order. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Salem Kaiser School Board on Tuesday, September 13th, 2016 at 6:00 PM. We are at Support Services Center, Room 2, 2575 Commercial Street, Southeast Salem, Oregon. I have reordered the agenda slightly in order to accommodate Jim Green, who's on vacation, so that he can participate in a vote. So we'll start with a call to order. I just did that. Now the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kristi, can you call the roll?
Nancy McMorris-Addix.
Here.
Paul Kylo.
Here.
Chris Brantley.
Here.
Marty Hyon.
Here.
Jim Green.
Here.
Rick Kimball.
Here.
Chuck Lee.
Here.
Great. And I just told you about the agenda modifications, removing the action item of the superintendent's contract to write after Audience Communications. All of your support materials will stay in the same order. So we'll start with Audience Communication. So we have four people signed up. When you come to the podium, limit your comments, please, to three minutes. If you have copies, give the materials to Kristi Brooks-Lathers at the end of the dais. When you're called on, give them to Kristi. And please state your name and address for the record when you come up. First person is Terry Tucker.
My name is Terry Tucker. My address is 493 Lake Fair Circle, North, Kaiser, Oregon, 97303. Board Chair McMorris-Addix, Vice Chair Kylo, members of the board, and Superintendent Perry. I'm here to speak to the increase in this superintendent's compensation package. I'm a Salem Kaiser educator. This is my 31st year with the district, and I work as a 4th grade teacher at Kaiser Elementary School. I have seen the incredible impact that Superintendent Perry has made in the short time she has been here, and I understand the board's interest in incentivizing her retention. I hope that the board is able to demonstrate the same commitment to retaining the educators who work in this district. This coming spring, when we license staff members through SKEA, our union are negotiating our compensation with the district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Terry. Next up is Robert Glasgow.
My name is Robert Joseph Glasgow, and my address is 7673 Sofia Street, Kaiser, Oregon. Board Chair McMorris-Addix, Vice Chair Kylo, and members of the board and Superintendent Perry, I am proud to be a South Salem Saxon, an IB Spanish teacher, an employee of the Salem Kaiser School District, and a member of the Salem Kaiser Education Association. I'm here to speak to the proposed increase in the superintendent's compensation package. Like many of my colleagues, I've seen the enormous impact that Superintendent Perry has made in the short time she has been here. The board's interest in increasing the incentive to keep her at the helm of our district is easily understood. I have also seen the impact of many incredible educators that have chosen to pursue options outside of their calling simply because their financial needs outweighed the realities of their passion for being educators. Hopefully, the board will be willing and able to demonstrate a commitment to retaining educators this spring when we are negotiating our new contract. We are with many students on a daily basis, and feeling appreciated as professionals is priceless. Please keep this in mind as you demonstrate your esteem for Superintendent Perry tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Robert. Next is Jay Reed.
Thank you. My name is Jay Reed. I'm Ask ESP president. I live at 4789 Joyce Street, Northeast Kaiser, Oregon. I'm also here to talk about the superintendent's benefit package. I think it's also appropriate of what you're trying to do to retain Ms. Perry. She has done enormous things for our district, and retaining her, I think, is a great thing for us to do. But also, I want to remind you that in a year and a half, we also go into negotiations, and that you appreciate and respect our employees as well as you do Ms. Perry when we bargain in that year. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. And Carissa Texley.
Hi, my name is Carissa Texley. My address is 2330 Winter Street, Southeast, here in Salem, Oregon. Board Chair McMorris, Vice Chair Kylo, members of the board, and Superintendent Perry, I'm speaking to the proposed increase in the superintendent's compensation. As an early-career educator, I am a 1st grade teacher at Chavez Elementary School. I think Superintendent Perry has done some amazing things in the short time that she has been here with us, and I understand the board's desires in guaranteeing her retention. I hope the board has the opportunity over this school year to see all the amazing things we are doing in schools for our students. This spring, I hope you will show how much you value retaining early-career employees. You can show all of the licensed staff in the district how you value retaining us as employees and appreciate all of our hard work by improving our compensation package. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Carissa. That ends the list of people who have signed up. Is there anyone out there that wanted to speak and didn't sign up? Okay, great. The next thing on our agenda is action on the amendment to the superintendent's contract. So in your board packet, that's item 3B. So at the June 28 business meeting, the school board approved Superintendent Perry's employment contract. After the approval of the contract, the board reached consensus that board leadership would continue the conversation regarding a competitive compensation package for Superintendent Perry. At the July 2616 work session, the school board had further discussion regarding the superintendent's compensation and requested board leadership to recommend a competitive compensation package for Superintendent Perry. Board leadership recommends the following. For 2016-17, $17,000 would be added to the current base salary of 2,004, and $14,000 added to the current $21,000 TSA. For 2017-18, the cost of living would be added to the base salary based on the amount allocated to other district administrators. In addition, a 4% retention incentive would be paid on June 30, 2018. For the 2018-19 school year, the amount of 2017-18 retention incentive would be added to the base salary along with the cost of living based on the amount allocated to other district administrators. In addition, a 4% retention incentive would be paid on June 30, 2019. An amendment to the superintendent's contract is attached. This item was presented to the school board for a first reading at the August 9, 2016 meeting is now being presented for action. Is there a motion?
I was just pointing to Mr. Kylo.
Oh, he's hiding behind the superintendent.
Actually, I wasn't, but I could now. I still have a good part of both negotiations.
Great. Paul, can I ask you to pull your...
So I still move.
Thank you. It's been moved and...Chuck?
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded to adopt the changes recommended. Is there discussion?
It has been discussed.
Okay. I just want to give an opportunity for Jim on the phone if there's anything you'd like to say. Jim?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Jim Green. First, thank you for accommodating my vacation schedule. I'm out in eastern Oregon, and it's beautiful out here. But I do want to say a couple of things. One, I really want to thank you and Vice Chair Kylo for sitting down and hammering out this agreement. I think it's a very important agreement for a retention issue with our superintendent. I know she has been there a short time, but she has done excellent work, and through our results policy, we will hold her accountable for the work that we'll continue on in our school district. And to the individuals that testified earlier, our hard-working teachers in our school district, I want to make sure they understand the board hears them, at least this board member does, and I support their efforts as well. And assuming our financial situation is in a better predicament than where we have been over the last several years, I understand that our hard-working educational professionals, whether they're teachers in the classrooms, our classified employees, our administrators, are woefully underpaid for the work, the important work that they do with our boys and girls. I see it every day with my children in the Salem Kaiser School District, and I want to make sure they understand we appreciate their efforts. And assuming our financial situation is in a way that we can do it, I will be in full support of trying to help them with their salaries as they helped us through tough financial times when we were making huge cuts in our school district budget by not taking COLAs and giving back to the district. And we appreciate that, and we hear their efforts. So I'm in favor of this, and I really appreciate your efforts, Madam Chair, and your efforts, Mr. Vice Chair Paul Kylo. I will be voting in support of this tonight.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Just kind of my same old comment that I made last month, that I do highly respect our superintendent. I think she's doing an awesome job, but I do just have a hard time with a net increase of $42,000 in one year unless the board had made some sort of...you know, I wasn't here when she was hired, unless they had made some sort of promise to bring her up to that level when they hired her. I think that is too much of an increase in one year.
Seeing no other comments, I think we'll vote. And all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Aye. The motion carries 6 to 1. Thank you, Jim. I appreciate your joining us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If it's all right with everybody else on the board, I think I will sign up. It's getting rather cold up here on the ridge.
Okay. Have a great vacation.
Thank you.
The next thing on our agenda is spotlight on success. Superintendent Perry.
Good evening, and thank you to the audience for a little bit of a rearrangement of the agenda. Our first spotlight will be presented by Karina Lee, the executive director of Salem Kaiser Education Foundation. And before we start, awesome back-to-school lunch today, and I know that's a big and heavy lift, and then to come here tonight. We appreciate your efforts. We know you've got a lot going on.
You did it both ways, too, and what talent we have in this room and beyond, can't appreciate it more. Thank you so much.
So I would like to ask Margaret Booker to come to the front. Margaret, come over here, as well as the principal of Grant Community School, Mark Morris. There he is. Margaret, it looks like you have two little ones that are related to you in the audience as well. Three, would you like to have them join you?
Margaret Booker has been nominated not only by the Grant Community School but as the...from the garden department at the Salem Kaiser Education Foundation. Margaret is a parent of three children who attend Grant Community School, and she volunteers in all of their classrooms. In addition to volunteering, and because she believes so strongly in education, she regularly participates in trainings that allows her to assist teachers with curriculum planning. Margaret's a champion for experiential learning, so she organizes field trips that offer children hands-on opportunities to learn. She advocates for a healthy school environment and supports the efforts of all educators, not only by dedicating her time but by funding resources for them as well. Margaret is truly a volunteer who understands the value of community involvement in education, and she's willing to step up, lead the way, and be the change she'd like to see. Congratulations.
Our next spotlight will be presented by Jay Reamy, our Director of Community Relations and Communication.
Thank you, Superintendent Perry, Chair McMorris-Addix, and members of the board. If I could get Miller Elementary Principal Laura Mata and her folks to come up with her, please, and join the board chair and the superintendent at the front. I'll introduce everybody when you're on your way up there. Our Business Partner of the Month for September is Green Acres Landscape. The business was nominated by staff from Miller Elementary. Rob Kansky is general manager, and Bonique Hollenreich is project manager and department head for the business. In their first meeting, Miller's community school outreach coordinator, Leslie Caldeo, who's here next to the principal, shared her project and ideas with Rob about gathering potential sponsors to be able to purchase yearbooks for their students, which the school would provide at no cost to the students. Rob was very friendly and open to the project. Bonique's passion for community involvement helped seal the partnership. She commented that they were pretty excited when Leslie reached out to them. Bonique recalled how special it felt to receive her yearbooks in school, so the project was something that they were happy to partner with us on. Green Acres Landscape became Miller's first sponsor with a donation of $500 at the end of the very first meeting where they talked about this. Rob also shared names and contact information of more than 10 local business owners that he personally knew and worked closely with. Through Rob's contacts, Leslie recruited new businesses and business partners, and many great opportunities for the school. Miller Elementary was able to reach their goal, and the staff would like to express their appreciation to Green Acres Landscape for being the first sponsor and sharing the valuable contact information to make the project a success. So thank you to Green Acres Landscape, and congratulations on being named our September Business Partner of the Month. Thank you.
And our last spotlight tonight will be presented by Lisa Harlan, our Director of Elementary Schools.
Good evening, Superintendent Perry, Madam Chair, members of the board. I would like to ask Maureen Murphy-Focal up to the front. Recently-retired Chapman Hill Elementary teacher, Maureen Murphy-Focal, was one of 213 mathematics and science teachers who, on August 22, was named by President Obama as a recipient of the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. The awardees represent all 50 states, the District of Columbia, Puerto Rico, U.S. Territories, and the Department of Defense Education Activity Schools. For the past 30 years, Maureen taught at Chapman Hill Elementary. She actively involved her students with community watershed projects, partnering with city, state, and national agencies. Her students enthusiastically joined Citizen Science Research Project to support activity-based learning. Maureen initiated Chapman Hill's First Family Science Night, in which she partnered with Oregon State University to engage families with hands-on investigations. She embraced the next-generation science standards by creating resources for the South Metro Salem STEM Partnership Leadership Team. She was also the science coordinator for her building and served on numerous district committees supporting transition to Common Core standards. Maureen was also on the team of teachers, two teams of students from Chapman Hill that won awards in the 2015-16 Toshiba NSTA Explore-A-Vision Competition. Though Maureen retired from the district at the end of June, she continues to teach students of Salem Kaiser. She serves as the environmental elementary educator at Strab Environmental Center. She also works with a team of teachers that will be providing outdoor school to Myers 4th graders this fall, and she will be teaching after-school nature classes for kids grades 1 through 3. On behalf of the Salem Kaiser School District community, we thank you for your exceptional work as an educator and mentor to our students. Congratulations.
Next on the agenda is back to action items, so we're going to do revision to board policy, EL 1, Global Executive Constraint. So at the summer planning meeting on July 26, the school board reviewed all of their policies and discussed the potential of revision to EL 1, Global Executive Restrain...Constraint, excuse me, Constraint. The revision adds language describing how the superintendent shall not knowingly cause or fail to take timely and appropriate action to correct practices which are unlawful or in violation of commonly accepted business and professional ethics and board policy. The policy is attached, and suggested revisions are marked with the new language, underlined, and the language to be removed struck through. This item was presented to the school board for a first reading at the August 9 business meeting is now being presented for action. I'll just point out to the board as well that a suggestion was made by Chris at the last meeting, and that suggestion has been added as well. So is there a motion? Paul?
I move that we accept the changes to executive limitation 1.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. The next thing on the agenda is the adoption of the consent calendar that includes adoption and appropriation of grant budgets and personnel actions. Is there anything that anyone would like to pull?
I would like to pull 4A, adoption and appropriation of grant budgets.
Any need to pull 4B? Paul?
No, but I would like to comment, I do like the new format, John. Thank you.
So is there a motion to accept the consent calendar, 4B?
Still vote.
Moved by Chuck, seconded by...
Second.
By Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Rick?
Yeah, I pulled 4A because of the grant related to New Oregon Head Start and Pre-Kin kindergarten Student Services Programs, the grant from ODE for almost $3 million. I was wondering if that...you know, how much of an increase that was over last year, because I know it was a big number last year, but this does seem higher. And a second question is, you know, we mentioned 10 Head Start classrooms here, and I know some of those are in our buildings and some of them are not. Facilities-wise, are we looking towards the future as we get more and more crowded? Are we going to have to find more outside classrooms for preschool, or are we going to have to not do preschool because we can't find outside classrooms? I don't know. It's just...
So I'll just make a couple of comments. I believe this is an increase because I know we were awarded additional Head Start slots. I don't know the number increase there. And what I'll tell you is the bulk of our classrooms are...well, we have a few in schools, but we also have quite a few at the East Salem Community Center and in a couple of our rural settings. And when we implemented Full Day K, we had to move a big portion of our preschool classrooms out of our schools because they are full. And so, yes, we're going to have to keep looking at those pre-K kids and looking outside of our schools.
So then some of these funds will go towards renting facilities in the future that we don't have to use that way right now.
Correct, correct. And I think it was, we did receive some additional startup funds for some additional Head Start classrooms. They give you a little boost, but it doesn't...it's not ongoing rent.
Okay. And then the second one related to preschool was on the Early Learning Hub grant related to startup supplies. It's on the fourth one or the first one on the next page?
The preschool promise, that's...I'm sorry, that's the startup funds. So we have three things going on with preschool. One is we have our title preschool funded out of our title. We have Head Start, that was expanded. And then the third thing, which is new this year, is there state funding for preschool called Preschool Promise. So we've got three different funding sources for our preschool programs and three slightly different preschool programs as a result. So the preschool promise, I don't remember the exact number of slots, but quite a few more slots. This is also more classrooms, and this is the startup funds for the preschool promise classrooms.
Okay, thank you.
It would be great to hear, like, what our total number of slots and if that's had an impact on our waitlist. It could certainly come in the career or whatever. Marty?
I have a question on the preschool promise. Does that eliminate, then, the need for certain parents to pay for preschool in Salem Kaiser, or do some parents still have to pay for their children to attend preschool?
Yes, we still have some tuition-based preschool programs. As I understand it, I think the preschool promise funds preschool for parents at a...that aren't as...I'm trying to think of how best to say this. The poverty level for Head Start is here, the poverty level for...the income level for preschool promise is here, but there still will be parents that are above the income level and would have to pay tuition for preschool.
Other comments or questions about that? Is there a motion?
I would like to move adoption of consent counter item 4A, as presented.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the report 4A. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. We have no readings tonight, so next thing on our agenda is reports. The monitoring report is EL 3, Relationships with Students, Parents, and Citizens. Superintendent Perry?
This is the third of 12 monitoring reports scheduled for 2016-17 and is designed to provide the board with information to determine if I am meeting the criteria established within the adopted executive limitations. This is executive limitation 3, Relationship with Students, Parents, and Citizens. And with respect to the relationship, students and citizens, the superintendent shall not cause or allow conditions, procedures, actions, or decisions which are unlawful, unethical, unsafe, disrespectful, disruptive, undignified, or a violation of board policy. I won't read all the "shall nots" for you, but I'd like to highlight a couple evidences of compliance. Many of these are things you see every year, but a couple that I think is important for as board that you should pay attention to is, am I out into the community enough? And so I've given you in the fifth bullet down some of the stakeholders groups I meet with, and I consider that a fairly high priority to continue those meetings with stakeholder groups. We also receive an organizational assessment and an ISO certification audit, both of which are conducted by external entities, so it's somebody from the outside looking into our organization. And then I want to remind you that last year, we did that fairly extensive community stakeholder engagement process around our English language...English learner program realignment. And so it just...I just want to highlight that we continue to really think about ways we can engage the public in important issues and decisions around our programs. One of the outcomes of that was related to some staffing that we actually implemented this year, and were things that we heard from those stakeholder groups. So the rest are things you've seen in the past.
Are there questions? Paul?
I don't know if I have a question. I have a concern. Prior to our vote on the change to...our vote 3A, which changed the EL 1, I had a great...I had several concerns with this particular report. But since we fixed it so that now it's only if the superintendent knows about problems is she responsible for them, and since we, on this board in the past year, since we received this report a year ago, have heard occasion when parents or community people have indicated that they've contacted school administrators and not been contacted back or had other communication issues, that would have landed on the would have landed on the superintendent's desk had we not voted earlier. And so I would have had troubles with this, but I know that she's working on that, and every time those come up, she is working to correct them. So that's, makes me feel better.
Chuck?
I, superintendent kind of highlighted the bullet, the fifth bullet down as far as groups that she receives feedback from, and not listed there, but I think it's kind of a key group and, and I, I know I've witnessed her receiving feedback from the faith community in our, in our cities. And so I commend her for including that also in, in another good example of a group that gives her, I think, some excellent feedback. We have a real good connection with the faith community in that they use our facilities a lot for a variety of different activities, and, and they care an awful lot about our students and our kids, and the superintendent does a great job communicating with them.
Anything else? I would like to remind the board, this is part of the superintendent's evaluation. We usually give thumbs up or thumbs down. Looks like we have consensus. The next thing on the agenda is Salem Kaiser Public Schools Head Start Pre-Kindergarten Program.
I'm going to have Eric Richards come to the podium to present this report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Superintendent Perry. I'm Eric Richards, Director of Student Services. You have before you the first three Head Start Pre-Kindergarten Program reports that you will receive this year, which is a federal requirement. And this particular report is divided into three key areas. One is an analysis of data from 2015-16, then some demographics for the current school year, and then recommendations and summations. Just a couple of highlights. I think you can see in the data analysis section what tremendous growth that we have in all of the domain areas, which is something to really celebrate. And even in the area with the lowest performance in the fall of math, there was tremendous growth of 63 percent. So, very, very positive growth in all domains. In the program demographic areas, you see that we did have 34 students expansion, so we now have 340 kids in our Head Start programs. And just so you, you know where they're being served, 17 of those 34 kids are being served in Liberty School in the morning and another 17 in Liberty in the afternoon. And then you have the recommendations and summation before you. One thing I did want to, to mention is the 40 new slots for preschool promise that were discussed a moment ago. 20 kids are being served at Bethel as a part of that expansion and another 20 at Baker Program. Overall, a very good year with a lot of good collaboration with the Early Learning Hub and with our elementary schools, increased focus on professional development and growth and expansion and number of kids that we're serving.
Great, other questions? Chris?
I was just wondering if, as we work with the students that we can, and we know that we have lots of students in Salem Kaiser of this age that are not able to get into a, into a program, are we doing any kind of tracking of those students after they enter kindergarten and first grade to, to see if the work that they did as in Head Start is actually making a difference in comparing them therefore to other students, similar demographics?
I'm not aware of that data collection, but Superintendent Perry, do you?
Yeah, I, I don't think we, well, I, I take that back. I think we need to ask Stephanie that question. She does a pretty good job of, of watching the growth of students. It was a little easier when we had our title preschools in our elementary title schools in that feeder area, so I'm, I need to ask Stephanie that question.
I only ask the question because with the early learning hubs, hopefully gaining momentum in our state, it would, it would seem that having that kind of data available on short notice would be very valuable and as we continue to try to get funding for that kind of work.
The other place I think we need to track data, and Stephanie Wetzel and I have talked about this, is around our work that we're doing in outreach to families around kindergarten readiness in some of our title schools with our KPI grant, our Kindergarten Partnership and Innovation Grant. So I think it's needed in a couple areas.
Rick?
Yeah, Eric, on the paragraph that talks about the math scores, I think the 91% on that paragraph is actually a typo maybe, because if it's related to the chart and on math, it should say 81. I just want to know which numbers.
I noticed that too, and I believe it should be 81%.
Okay, thanks, that makes sense, okay. Be nice if it was 91.
Well, and I noticed they have a math goal too, so that's why I would say it's 81.
Do you happen to have any idea of what the number on the waiting list is?
I do not, no.
That's okay. And do you also know, are the kids being bused to Baker and Bethel? Or are they from neighborhoods that are continuous with...
I believe they're from the neighborhood.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you.
This is just a report for information, so there's no action? Do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question, but now I'm not seeing where I saw the list of locations. Is there nothing anymore at Washington Elementary School for preschool?
If it's not listed here, I do not believe so, and it probably moved when we increased to Full Day Kindergarten.
So, given the, that particular neighborhood, how are those children getting to one of the preschools? I mean, are they being bused?
Yes. We have a number of buses that pull up to East Salem Community Center, yes.
Any other questions? Next thing on the agenda is information. You have a list of 2016-17 upcoming school board and budget committee meetings. The work session scheduled for September 27th has been canceled. The budget committee has two vacancies. Information is available on the district website if you're interested in applying. Not you all, you don't need to apply. I was speaking to the public, yes. Any questions about the schedule? Next thing on our agenda is audience communication on non-agenda items. First on the list is Greg Devine. Please limit your comments to three minutes. If you have any materials, please give them to the board assistant. Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Thank you, chairperson. My name is Greg Devine. I live at 2043 Winter Street Southeast in Salem. I am here in regards to Northeast Salem and McKay High School. The process that I've gone through, going, coming to your meetings the last several months, we've been trying to identify things that McKay needs over there especially, and we're talking about, what we came up with really is three big ones. Community involvement, getting the parents involved, volunteerism, and getting more sponsors and in-kind, let's say donations and things from the community. What we came up with is, and I, I'm really serious about this, we'd like to see some type of a reader board or a sign on Lancaster and Wolverine, right there by your building, that says McKay High School, Home of the Royal Scots, that has a, a digital reader board. The biggest thing we have over there is the diversity in, in the community. And being able to see something driving down Lancaster, I got to tell you, is far more important and going to get to more people than it is doing the internet or website and things like that. Think about the technology that you have. You can have different languages up there. We have all kinds of stuff at McKay that are, are hindering this, this school going forward. And what I propose to you is I'm not talking about money. I'm not talking about you guys doing it, I'm talking about you guys getting behind the idea of what I'm talking about. Because we need to generate interest over there, you need to, you need to create conversation amongst the community. That's how you get change in the community. One little thing, one sign that those kids can also say, this is ours, wow, that's, that's impressive. It's right there on the school district's property, I think. I haven't done the homework on that. But I'm thinking about this in the large picture. If you want to change things in something, you have to get people involved. And the hardest thing for us to do is to get those parents involved. But just writing on the board, the person that's not even involved with the school might see something, those kids that go to those schools, the grade schools feed into it, the middle schools can have their, their carnival thing, think about that. A Swiegel Carnival can be on that McKay High sign that flashes 24/7. That's what I'm talking about. It's not sitting behind Salem Kaiser, there's, you know, Kaiser Permanente building. We want it to be something where they drive by and go, wow, that, that's impressive. That's cool. That one little thing, and I'm not talking about the money. I'm talking about get behind what I'm saying and get this done for these kids, because that's the only way we're going to get the facilities that we're asking for. You guys don't have the cash. We're going to have to generate the cash. We've got to generate it in the community, and that means that we have to do it ourselves. And the only way we're going to do it is to get it out there just a little at a time. We got this play going on here tonight. We got this swim meet going on here tonight. We got something going on that's going to go all day and all night, and everybody driving down that street's going to notice, and it'll put something in their head in a positive way about the school itself. I got my watch. I'm serious about this, and I challenge you folks. This is not anything you can do, you can do this without getting up behind your desk. Right where you sit, we can get this done. I challenge you. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Greg. Next, Ken Simila. Okay, thank you.
My name is Ken Simila. I'm a resident at 1810 20th Street Northeast Salem and the Nen neighborhood. Madam Chair, board members, and Superintendent Perry, I want to talk to you about district real estate and some effects it's had on Northeast Neighbors, our neighborhood association that's inner-city, from parish to the state hospital, from State Street to the state fairgrounds. The Salem Kaiser District has apparently either been indifferent to or unaware of the reductions it has made of formerly park-use district property in our inner-city Nen neighborhood. These reductions have negatively affected livability in both north and western parts of Nen for both children and adults by eliminating access to and the enjoyment of these former district-owned neighborhood park-type amenities. There, we've lost four parks, three of them were on district property. The Nen block located between 12th and 13th Streets and Center and Marion, the old Washington Elementary School, this location in Nen had playground equipment, including swings, a jungle gym, chinning bars, a softball field, a grove of mature fir trees, and several picnic tables. Safeway is now on that site. I went to that school for my first through third grade. The Nen grounds adjacent to Olinger Swimming Pool at 1300 A Street, this school district site had picnic tables, a small meadow, playground equipment, again, including swings, a jungle gym, and chinning bars. The Strob Environmental Center is now on the east side of Olinger, and the playground equipment on the west side was removed and never replaced. The southwest corner of Barrick Field in Nen, just block north of Market Street, the only park we had north of Market, behind the baseball backstop at the west end of Olive Street. The school district site had playground equipment for small children, including a climbing dome, a slide, a spring-mounted, spring-mounted riding animals, and a picnic table. This most recent elimination of park amenities for our neighborhood use by the district is now simply dirt and weeds. There was another park in the corner, southeast corner of the state fairgrounds, not district property, the city developed, accessed through 21st and 23rd and 24th pedestrian access, that's also disappeared. So those four parks north of Center Street and two of them north of Market no longer exist. We do not have access in Nen, and we would like the district to be aware when it's negotiating for, with the city over trading properties. A little bit of Inglewood Park was recently negotiated to be district property, and we would like to see some consideration of the impact you're having on our neighborhood when district property is converted from park use to other use. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. The next person on the list, I think, is Chris Tanner. Tannen?
Tarver.
Tartar?
Tarver.
Tarver. I should know that, shouldn't I?
My name is Chris Tarver. I live at 1555 Royalty Drive Northeast in Salem. I have a, I have four kids that attend school here in Salem. One at Salem Academy. His grandpa's a pretty nice guy. And the other three are in public school. McKay, my oldest goes to, is here who I'm speaking up. You know, I really didn't have anything I really wanted to say in particular. I'll let you folks know that I'm coming up on my, my one-year anniversary of my awakening. And McKay High School is responsible for that. And my awakening is just opening my eyes and going beyond complaining, you know, making a phone call to someone, and then accepting the phone call when they called back, and communicating on it, and becoming a part of something. The McKay High School Athletic Booster Club, you know, going inside the school and taking a look around, coming, overcoming, you know, some of the biases that I had read and heard from different areas and people, sources. Looking at things on, online, like inequity, and, you know, how to come up with solutions to these problems, you know. I mean, my son told me the other day that he likes this new, this new guy, you know, I mean, McKay High School did that for me. So how can I not come up here and spend three minutes just telling you folks again how important it is that you remember McKay High School and some of the things that are bothersome, troublesome, in need of repair? The students there, you know, they need someone. I'm reaching out to the other groups. I had, I spoke with Jackie Winters on the phone, you know, she told me to ask about Common School Fund as far as getting additional monies, maybe the possibility of doing some obligation bonds. You were, I, I mean, I don't even know what these things are, folks, you know, but these are things that I'm looking into and having conversations about and trying to get information on. And maybe you guys know a little bit about those things, I'm sure you probably do, you know, I know you're, you're smart folks, and you're, you know, you've been involved in these, the board and, and in matters of the school for a long period of time, you know. I have one year, you know, but that one year's going to be two, and it'll be more, because this has brought something out to me that I had no idea really was there. You know, I'm meeting with the gentleman from Mono and Mono and the director at the Salem Coalition for Equality on Thursday to try to find some ways to get to some of the parents, you know, of different ethnic groups and stuff. I'll conclude by saying I really appreciate it, all the stuff you guys have done, your support. I hope you'll continue and become even more involved in McKay and just finding out what's happening there. Gil Calderazzo Doti told me that her husband, Guido loved McKay, and it was a great school, and it can be great again. And people like myself are going to make sure that that happens, and I hope that folks like you will give your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. The next person on the list isn't really a person, so I'm not sure what to do. It says N E N. Okay.
Good evening, members of Salem Kaiser School District and Superintendent Perry. My name is Sherry Clements. I reside at 1590 Jefferson Street Northeast here in Salem, and I'm a board member of the Northeast Neighbors Neighborhood Association with the City of Salem. Myself and several members of the Nen Board have come tonight to this meeting to respectfully request that your board... request that your board add a very small piece of property that is to the park property swap that you have forwarded to the City of Salem to help compensate for the .22 acres that you're requesting out of Inglewood Park. The piece that we're talking about is the southwest corner of Barrick Field. It's presently not really in use as anything. As Ken has told you, it's weeds and what appears to be some old bark and overturned soil. And there are a couple of picnic benches there, picnic tables there, I believe. This, as I said, would help compensate for the .22 acres that you have included in the park property swap that you requested from the City of Salem. This addition to the acreage listed in your park property proposal would further enhance the school district patrons' experience when they attend games at Barrick Field by giving those families that have small children a place to watch the games and keep their kids engaged with healthy play. I'm sure that a lot of you that are baseball fans know that this is a common practice at the baseball stadium in Kaiser. They have a large play area there because little people have a very short attention span, and when they get rambunctious, it's really easy. I live two blocks from Barrick Field. It's really, really easy for those kids to dart into any one of those three or four streets because they see a bird and dad and mom are busy watching the game. So I think that it would be an enhancement to the folks in the district, your patrons that do attend those games. Presently, the Nen neighborhood has no playground equipment north of Market Street for children and families. This was a small, there was a small playground located at this location and was removed approximately 10 years ago. My granddaughter was three years old, she's 13 now. Since that time, children and families on the north side of Market in the Nen neighborhood have had to walk across Market in order to enjoy outdoor play in a city park. And that means that they not only have to cross Market, but they have to go all the way down to Inglewood because there's nothing else there, or they have to go north on, or west on Market to Grant. And that means that they've got to cross a couple of very busy streets going that way. If this small piece is made a part of the list of properties all over the city that the school district wants to trade, it would satisfy in a small way the goal stated in the Nen Cessna Neighborhood Plan as it has to do with Barrick Field. That's located in that report on page 55, section A17.1. Specifically, and I quote, "The city should design and develop small pocket parks to serve areas that are currently underserved by existing parks and may not have adequate sites for larger parks. The city should work with Salem Kaiser School District to redevelop a pocket park at Barrick Field," unquote. We are asking your board to add this small .04 acre piece of property to the list of property that's being considered by the Salem City Council as a trade for cross-use properties across the entire city of Salem holdings. By adding this piece to the ownership trade, Salem Kaiser School District will not have further liability issues with that little corner, maintenance or repair to the pocket park, and that Nen would like to reestablish in that area. Because I'm sure that a lot of you know, if you're familiar with the area north of Market, between the railroad tracks and about approximately 25th Street, there's not a lot of availability of land for anything. And this would really help the folks in that area that have children, especially the ages between, well, toddlers up to about 10 or 12 years old. We're not talking about a lot here. You heard the listing of what was there before. And this would really help the neighborhood, and it would also help our feeling about losing yet more ownership at another park in the Nen area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Folks that are here on this issue, hold up your hands. Leslie Paulson.
My name is Leslie Paulson, and I'm also here in support of Barrick Field. My daughter used to be able to play at Barrick Field Park, but no more. I do live at 930 Garnet Street, so I live about five blocks away from Barrick Field. So I'm in support of putting that into part of the trade.
Thank you, Leslie. Joan Lloyd.
Superintendent and school board members, thank you for the opportunity to be here with our concerns, and I thank you for your service to the community too. I'm Joan Lloyd, and I'm here as Nen Chair to speak about the land exchange for the Salem Kaiser School District and the City of Salem. Sherry mentioned the neighborhood plan, and this is also on the City of Salem's website, but I can give it to you as I leave and have you look at it, although I would like it back. But, well, according to the 2010 U.S. Census, the Northeast Neighbors Neighborhood has a median income of $36,338. Renter occupied housing units are 45.5% of the total. About 30% of the population is of the age to have children that would use play equipment. Having a play area near to one's home is almost a necessity when a play structure on people's own property or on their rental property is not affordable or non-existent. When people use public transit or walk because they don't have cars, going to a playground that is not easily accessible is not an option. Many residents have to cross Market Street, a four-lane road with the 30 mile an hour speed limit, which is often not enforced under 35 miles per hour, according to the police department even. And they have to do that to go to Inglewood Park, which is a lovely park. It's much safer to cross 17th Street to go to Barrick Field, where we hope that the very small, untended southwest corner would be given to the city in exchange for the larger, well-equipped playground of Inglewood Elementary School. And I have brought two 5x7 photos so that you can see them. They're labeled on the back which is which, and so you will be able to compare them. Your mission statement shows that you really care about children, and we would hope that you would include this exchange with the City of Salem up at the southwest corner of Barrick Field and the Inglewood, City of, this Inglewood School Playground. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Is there anyone else who didn't sign up who wanted the opportunity to talk? Seeing none. The next thing on the agenda is board report on activities. Thinking some folks maybe have something to say. Marty?
I have two things. One is not my activities, but I was wondering what, how would we go ahead based on the testimony we just heard? How do we look at that in what we had already voted on? What's the next steps? And then I have something to share after that.
So it's my understanding that the land swap has gone to the city, to the city council. After it goes to the city council, it needs to come back to the school board for a final approval. So you have not spoken yet. You have heard, but I don't think you've made any kind of decision.
I thought it had gone to the City of Salem Parks Commission, and they had approved it, but I didn't think that it had actually gone to city council as of yet?
It goes to the city council on September 26th.
So should the people that testified today, should they go talk to city council as well? Would that be your recommendation?
That would make sense.
And then perhaps we would look at an amendment, depending on what happened at a future time?
Yeah, we haven't done any staff research on this proposal at all, and it would have to be an interaction we had with city staff regarding it.
All right. And then my thing I wanted to talk about is, September is National Disaster Preparedness Month, and as you know, I'm part of CERT, Community Emergency Response Team, and you should have at least a two-week supply of food and water in your home because that's how long it's going to take. I see that back there. That's how long it's going to take before we can get stuff in here. Bridges will be out, et cetera, after a 9.0 earthquake, which they say now is between 20 and 30% chance of happening in the next 50 years. I do have materials up here, and I'd be happy to share with anybody after the meeting.
Paul?
I had the opportunity to attend the McKay Sports Day. Larry Ramirez and I were there. I got my socks from the girls' women's cross-country team. And then also, I was representing the board at the chamber luncheon with the superintendent yesterday. We learned about OMSI.
Are they going to move here?
No.
I like OMSI. Anyone else? Chuck?
I'd like to commend the Executive Director of SKEF and the entire SKEF team for putting on an excellent back-to-school luncheon today. Dynamic speaker. They gave out some awards to some very deserving community partners, and it was a great event. Attended by, I bet about 5,000 people were there having lunch today, so I might exaggerate that number a little bit, but it was a very good turnout, and we appreciate the board being there and being supportive.
Others? Rick?
We did get to hear Kelly sing at that event. Nice voice there, Kelly. It was good.
And I'd add that Cynthia Richardson just nailed the National Anthem. She did a beautiful job.
Yes, and we would be remiss to not mention Lisa McIntyre and John Van Drill also accompanying the star, Kelly Carlisle, in the center. Well, we're going to expect music pretty much at every meeting from now on, Kelly. Anyone else? Okay. Superintendent's comments.
So I was going to give you a comment on the land swap with the city. It does, it has gone through the Parks and Recs, and the full recommendation is going to the council on September 26th. The plan, depending on what happens with the city council, is after the council reaches agreement, it will come back to the board. Right now, it's set to come back to the board on October 11th. With start of school, we've had a busy start of school. Our enrollment is up, just about as expected right now. Right now, we're about 780 kids over what we were at this exact time last year, and the budget, I know, 780 is a lot. We're not to that 10-day drop period yet, but, so we will, that number will go down a little bit, but we are at 780 over this exact time last year. And no surprise that some of that, a lot of that growth is in East Salem and McKay especially. I can't remember the exact numbers, but they're up over 2,400, and so they are growing. With that, we do watch enrollment across the district in these first couple weeks because we'll have some spikes that we know we need to take care of for just some unexpected things with class size. So we're keeping an eye on all of that. Staffing and vacancies, I was asked to give a couple comments about that. This year, we had 322 new hires in our licensed positions, so that's a very big number for our HR department. But we are about 50% lower in our vacancy rate this time as we were this time last year. So as much as we're hiring a lot, we were really out in front of the hiring season this year, and it proved to be an effective strategy with us. We have about approximately eight classroom vacancies and then a number of partial positions and temporary positions for staff that are out on leave. In our hard-to-fill positions, we made the commitment to get to K3 in all of our literacy squared schools, and we are proud to say we are fully staffed K3 at all of our literacy squared schools, dual-language schools, and our Spanish program. So those bilingual positions especially, we made good headway in. And then right now, with special ed, we only have two openings. This time last year, we had anywhere between 15 and 17, depending on the day. So we're just looking for two additional special ed teachers. We also have made a dent in our bus driver shortage, although we're still short nine positions for bus drivers, but we're about 50% filled over this time last year. 50% higher filled this time last year. Special compliments to our HR department who have really changed their strategy around hiring and their turnaround time. They were way out in front of the hiring season. We got some candidates from Lewis &amp; Clark because of our recruitment efforts there and them wanting to come work for us. And I was visiting with a McKay High School principal who said she had a couple Lewis &amp; Clark teachers who have actually moved to Salem, thrilled to be in Salem, and can't imagine working anywhere else. Now, we're just in a couple weeks of school, but they've actually moved this direction in our commuting, which I think speaks about our recruitment and our retention when people want to come work for us, which is just huge kudos to our HR department. And especially Steve Nelson took the lead on that this year and really made some great strides. And special ed is in no small part to our special ed cohort that we put through the budget process over a year ago now. We have our first placements of our special ed teachers. So we are still actively recruiting and working to retain, and no, we will still have a few vacancies throughout the year, but couldn't be happier with where we are at the start of the year.
Great. I just have one comment before we adjourn. I had the opportunity today to speak with a kindergartner who was just glowing about her excitement about being in school, and I would hope all of you could find a kindergartner to chat with about what it's like to be in their first week of school because her enthusiasm was contagious. Her entire face, like, was taken over by her smile. It was lovely. So kind of reminds us all why we do this work. Have a wonderful night. With that, we're adjourned.